Off the days in Manana Sizouis. The public hearing by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation is now called to order is about 9:04 in the morning for the record and in accordance to 5 TCA Chapter 8 Subsection 8107. Notices were sent out via email to all the senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on February 19th that adheres to the five-day notice and the second notice was sent on Wednesday, February 24th to adhere to the 48-hour notice. I want to note for the record that any written testimonies may be submitted after this public hearing to the office of Senator Tina Munya Barnes at 155 Hester Place, Sagatni, Guam, 96910 or via Facsimile at 472-3400 or email at senator@tina munya barns dot com. And if there's any further questions, you can call my office at 472-3455 or 56 and speak to Alan Cepeda, who's with us this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, on the agenda this morning, we have three items. First would be the appointment of Ms. Geraldine M. Leon Guerrero, member to the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners. We also have a Bill 234-33, which is an act to appropriate the balance amount in fiscal year 2014's hot tax surplus fund, which is the hotel occupancy tax to the Guam Visitors' Bureau for Safety-related Capital Improvement Projects in Tumon. And also a similar bill, Bill 252-33, which is to appropriate the sum of $910,000 from fiscal year 2015 hotel occupancy tax unreserved fund balance to Guam Visitors Bureau for Safety-related Capital Improvement Projects in Tumon. I will share for the record that a fiscal note was requested and submitted to us, but the committee will note that we will do an unupdated fiscal note request sharing the some inquiries that was submitted to this office because on the fiscal notes, the 2016 unreserved balances were noted for both bills when it should be 2014 for Bill 234 and then 2015 for 252. So with that being said, I do know that several of the director from the GURA office is here. Mr. Mike Duennius, thank you for joining us. And also from the Guam Visitors Bureau, we both have the general manager and the deputy general manager, Mr. Nathan Denite, former Senator Telo Tadegui, and also a couple of board directors for GBB, Mr. Clifford Guzman and Mr. Mickey M. With that being said, first on the agenda is Ms. Geraldine M. Leon Guerrero. If anybody else is here to speak before she comes up, I do have some folks who are listed. And Dr. Jalen Kent, please join us. Mr. Mike Duennius from GURA. I do know that Mr. Albert Santos also signed in, but he said to support. Are you giving testimony, Mr. Santos, or just Mr. Duennius? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. And ladies and gentlemen, joining me this morning is my colleague, Senator Tom Ada. Thank you, Senator Ada, for joining me this morning. So if I may, Ms. Geraldine, I will go ahead and ask that the Mr. Duennius and Dr. Kent go ahead and present their testimony first.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Senator Ada. First off, I want to thank the legislature for acting quickly on two appointments that Governor Cavill made earlier this year. And at this point, I'd just like to summarize where we are in terms of our membership on the board. We have five members out of a seven-member board. Two of the members now have terms have expired earlier this week and a third one has an expiration will be in March. And so we are working closely with the governor's office on addressing those issues. But I also want to thank this legislature for acting quickly in the previous nominations. I'm very excited and looking forward to work with the current nominee, Mrs. Geraldine Leon Guerrero. Her accomplishments and the fact that she is running her own business speaks well for her ability to contribute to the GURA Board of Commissioners. Her business background definitely would help us in terms of guidance with the various issues that we present before the board, financial or personnel and other fun stuff. So I'm here to support her nomination. Thank you.
And for the record, Mr. Duennius, state your full name and...
You think I don't by now.
Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Michael Duennius. I'm the executive director for the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority.
Thank you. Doctor, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning on behalf of my good friend, Jerry Leon Guerrero. Jerry's the kind of gal that when you meet her, you remember where you were and what you were doing. And I have a very distinct memory at the time. I was doing some pre-work in the effort to bring the National Association of Women in Construction to Guam. And in that capacity, I was meeting with various leaders in our community, among which included, of course, James Martinez from the Guam Contractors Association and Dr. Burt from the Trades Academy. So I got a call one morning from James. He says, "Jalen, you've got to come over here and meet somebody." I said, "Yeah, sure." Went on over to the GCA. I'm sitting in the conference room. There was a gal sitting in there. I didn't know who she was. And James was sitting there and I thought we were waiting for Dr. Burt and Jerry. So I'm sitting there chit-chatting and talking about, you know, some of the challenges we're going to face. For instance, how are we going to bring the national dignitaries from Maywick to Guam? I mean, from the mainland to Guam because that's required for chartering. And this woman right here, she just says, "You know, we'll just go to the large construction companies and we will get them to donate miles." So it didn't matter what concern I was raising as we're chit-chatting, she had a solution. And then I finally said, "You know, who are you? I need to meet you. I need to know who you are." She says, "Well, I'm Jerry Leon Guerrero." So in fact, that's what happened. She got on board the team. She went on to be the chartering vice president of the National Association of Women in Construction. And we chartered with 83 ladies and it was a watermark in the history of national in Maywick that we chartered with so many ladies. No other chapter had ever chartered with that many. There's another little backstory here, which is I, you know, we all know about the Construction News Bulletin, which is the leading publication in construction on the island, in my opinion. It's from the Guam Contractors Association. And I was talking about that and come to find out in referencing Jerry's business, she's the publisher of that, Aztec. So here's a woman who's just knocking my socks off. So she also has other board experience, which has been referenced already. She continued to serve on the Maywick Board. She's involved with Special Olympics. She's involved with Lupus. So you were involved with Lupus? Okay. So what I came to learn is this is a lady who's got leadership. She's a problem solver. She's a creative thinker. She thinks outside the box. She is incredibly passionate about what she does. And even more importantly to me, she's come passionate. But I think one of my favorite qualities about Jerry is her wit and her humor. She's a very hard worker and she gets a lot done and we have a lot of fun getting it done. So I highly support this nomination for Jerry Leon Guerrero. And I just want to close with one comment, which is if you want to get something done, ask a busy person.
Thank you, Dr. Kent. Before we ask the appointee to speak, do any of my colleagues have questions for the presenters? Okay. I'd like to thank both of you for coming here this morning to share your presentation and support for Mrs. Leon Guerrero. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Would you like to share a little bit about yourself to us before we ask questions of you?
Yes.
And go ahead and state your name for the record.
Yes. Thank you very much for having me this morning. My name is Geraldine Mediolan Leon Guerrero. A lot of folks out there know me as Jerry. And I've been, I'm very honored today to be considered as part of one of the board for GURA. I've been in business for, under Aztec, for over 10 years. I've been the general manager and now am the president. Before then, I used to work for images advertising under the direction of my father-in-law. My background is, I studied marketing management in the University of Portland and tried to minor in paralegal. I tried to make college my career and then brought myself back on to Guam due to personal reasons and then structured myself into a family, our family business. You know, I've, it's just me and my husband and my dog named Jack. And so I strive myself to do a lot of work in public outreach besides my business. And that's why, like Jalen's testimony was, I've, I do with, I helped establish Lupus Awareness Group of Guam. I'm part of Special Olympics Guam. I'm a lecturer at my Sanitaro Sita Catholic Church every first Sunday of the month. I used to sit on the board for Mini Law Municipal Council. And I'm a third Sunday radio host over at KPRG Public Radio for Route 66, if some of you guys don't know that. My listeners are Vietnam veterans, if you guys, you know, so. So I do have a lot of time on my hands, but I, one thing clear about, I'm very defined in time management. I'm very, I have a lot of integrity. I have a lot of dedication in things that I give my word. And that's one of very key about myself is that when I give my word and my dedication to something, I am there 110%. I've worked myself within my business for the past 10 years solely. I own over 50% of it. And I have to say, I did, I'm doing pretty well with it. I have a great team in my business that our turnover has been almost nothing. You know, our, my team has been together from almost the get-go. And I know that I can most definitely bring a lot of creative and good, you know, good policies, possible policies or recommendations to the board and have an open mind when it comes to being a team player and participation in terms of some of the issues that may be brought at hand when it comes to GURA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so very much, Geraldine, for stepping up to the plate and being a volunteer to GURA. And I'd like to thank the administrating, the administration for sending your appointment down. I will disclose for the record that I've known Mrs. Leon Guerrero for many, many, many years. As you can see, based on the professional involvement she's had, I also want to say for the record, thank you, Dr. Kent, for giving us the opportunity to help with that charter as I did the resolution for that, for the founding members to the Women in Construction. And I was so elated that Guam was right up there. And just looking at the awards that you received, you were the Guam Businesswoman Business Year nominee for 2014, 2013. You were the Guam Contractors Association's Champion Award, but also the National Association of Women in Construction's Vision of Excellence Award was given to you and the group. You know, it makes me proud when I see local women step up to the plate and, no offense to my colleagues here, it's just, it just knows that the passion and the drive to get things done and to better our community and make a difference, to help make a difference, I believe that happens when you take on a job. I will note for the record that I will expeditionally work your committee report in for this upcoming session. And now that I have that part done and that I commit that part to getting it on the March session, I just want to ask you one question. Based on being appointed to the GURA board, if there was anything new or creative you'd like to think of to make a difference for GURA and the people of Guam, could you share any idea right now?
You know, right now, one of the many, one of the, one of the important issues that we're having to face as community members is the need for housing and the possible shortfall in terms of supply to put our community members who need assistance into housing. And one of the things that I look at is working together to come with alternative ways that we can look outside of getting our private sector to somehow partner with our public sector within like GURA to come out, to come with a program or a, although it's already being established currently, but having other companies come forward. Because our supply of housing and, that we need for our community members is, I mean, it's in the thousands. And I, you know, I was reading about it and I was so amazed by, there's just so many people that, that, you know, there's only so much that we could do right now with what we're giving, with what we're given, but that should not stop us from continuing to find solutions for it. And I know that as government and, you know, within the government, that we're working overtime with what we're given in our means. So that's why us as private sector, that we too need to come in and be part of the community to help our community. And that's what I was thinking, you know, there could be alternative ways, you know, there's possible ways. We bought the National Association of Women in Construction, construction women, women who own businesses, women who could build, women, you know, companies who could build, companies who can invest, companies who could see some type of outreach around Guam in terms of, you know, so I'm just like thinking out of the box. I'm not saying that this is how things could be, but I'm just saying that, that there are ways and solutions, you know, and alternatives that can happen for our community members because they're in the thousands. You know, and I read in the paper the other day that there's 400 and some children that are homeless. And I couldn't, I couldn't tell them, I said, "400 and some children that are homeless." I said, "You know, there has to be ways that we can do to, you know, to find some sort of, you know, you know, of a avenue for them." You know, you can only lead them to where it is, it's up to them, but giving them that assistance and letting them know that this is what you can do, then by golly, we've done what we could. You know, so that's what I was thinking, that there could be, it's just a matter of trying to put together a platform, a pilot program, you know, things like that that can happen. You know, I'm not saying that that's what it is, I'm just saying that.
I really appreciate it to see the passion and the light and I know that you're doing a lot of thinking in your head about what can be done and true engagement with public private partnerships. And I think GURA will be very happy just seeing that there's another woman that will be on the team that will help bring that drive to make a difference. So I truly appreciate it. Senator Ada, you have any comments?
As I was looking at your packet and I, you know, I noticed you're an academy graduate, check.
Yeah.
University of Portland graduate, check. My daughter went to school there. My wife went to school to academy. You're from Mangilo, big check.
Yeah.
But, and I, you know, I'm impressed by all the things that you've been involved with, certainly very much community oriented. But I think probably what's most impressive is just sitting here, listening to you, and it looks like you're just busting at the seam, wanting to, you know, go out there and just, you know, let's, let's do something. And I must say though, GURA, GURA certainly does a good job, I think, of, you know, providing as best, maintaining the housing stock that it has and the programs. And I think that that's very important because, you know, providing that environment for a good standard of living for these families, I think just kind of, you know, sets the bar.
Yes.
And I think a lot of that is reflective with, with what GURA is doing. I think what management needs is the support from, from the commission. And I've always looked at GURA, that particular board as really one of the, you know, this is not the, we meet once a month sort of thing and, you know, have coffee and break bread. I imagine there's going to be a lot of reading and just one-on-one discussions so that when you come to the board meeting, it's as productive as possible and actual decisions are made there. But I'm impressed with the energy that's just wanting to come out and, and participate and engage. So I look forward to that. I'll be watching.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning, Senator.
What more? Again, I'm looking at your packet and highly impressed. I, I didn't know all this about you. I've known of you and I've known of some of the things that you've been involved with, but as I, you know, scroll down and just kind of look at it, all the involvement that you have in our community, I think is very impressive. I think it seems to me that looking at this packet and listening to you and listening to the testimony on your behalf, you kind of embody that old saying that if you want something done, give it to a woman.
Yeah.
And I think you were probably the one that that saying addressed. The only comment I have at this point, I look forward to you serving this board, but I do have to at least ask you, and I promised myself I would ask everybody from now on, whoever's coming before to serve on a board, right? Have you seen the conflict of interest statute in our books?
Do you mean that if I was, I had previously, yes, met with them and discussed whether or not if there were any conflict of interest with myself and with my family within GURA? Do you mean by that question?
Well, yeah. Have you ever considered, I mean, you know, in, in thinking about accepting this nomination, have you had time to reflect upon at least the possibilities of any potential conflicts you might have with this vice president of this board?
Oh, yes, yes, definitely. I have reflected upon whether or not I would have any conflict of interest with GURA. And I would not have accepted anything if I did not reflect it or had reviewed whether or not in my head, you know, would I, in the future, now, currently in the past, you know? So I went all through the ABCs to Z and, and, you know, kind of reflected to say, okay, you know, if I'm going to commit myself to something, then I have to see whether or not, have I ever done anything in the past? Has my family ever done anything in the past? Will I do any business in the future that may compromise or conflict in any way being on any, on this board or any of the boards that I have previously sat on or am currently sitting on? For instance, Special Olympics, Lupus, you know? And so I've always reflected on that, most definitely, yes. I've definitely taken that into consideration and have always put that as key and foremost to ensure that any type of business or any involvement that I, that I am currently a part of, that I'm true and I have integrity and I'm honest and that, that's very key with me. And so what, what I put as a, and I sign and true in my testimony is what's going to be given for the duration that I stand seated at wherever I am, wherever I represent myself at. Yes, sir?
I appreciate that. I appreciate that answer. And like I said, I just had to ask that question and I had promised myself that I would ask all nominees to any boards that question, just to make sure and get it on record that you have considered it, right? And you find, you can, you enter into this with a clear conscience and with no real ulterior motive to, you know, to have any conflict going into this position. And I think that's very important. I mean, it's, it's a very fine line on some, on some items, I think, for all of us because we're, first of all, we're a very small island and we play many roles, we wear many hats and sometimes it's a very fine line. But again, I think just the fact that you did give it some good thought and really was honest with yourself so that you could be honest with us and going forward, like I said, I look forward to you serving on the board. I think the management at GURA is definitely benefiting for you being on this board. It's going to benefit. I think that you're going to perhaps move them a little faster along the way than they might even want to move, but that's a good thing. Sometimes you need that, that could, a little bit of a, what is it, motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, just going forward. And like I said, I'm looking forward to you serving on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Espaldón, and thank you for bringing up the conflict of interest portion as, as we have had in the past, good nominees and when they got through, sitting on the meetings, realized that there may be potential conflicts of interest. So I'm very grateful that you've gone through that avenue and that GURA did take the time to share with you the possibilities to see if you were, would be a potential conflict of interest in that.
Right.
And I appreciate that because that makes it easier for us to, to make sure that we move the packet forward. I will do note for the record to the listening audience and to you folks here that there was a letter of support from the Lupus Awareness Group Guam, signed by Ms. Julia Alicia G. Roberto as the executive director and support of Ms. Geraldine M. Leon Guerrero to the GURA board and talked about her expertise and her guidance and just her creativity. So we will append that to the committee report. And with that being said, if there are no one else in the audience here or would like to present testimony, we will have called your hearing publicly, your appointment publicly heard. So thank you very much. Have a wonderful weekend. See you tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Ladies and gentlemen, next on the agenda is Bill Number 234-33 LS as introduced by Senator Tom Ada, which is an act to appropriate the balance amount in fiscal year 2014 hot surplus fund to the Guam Visitors Bureau, GBB for Safety-related Capital Improvement Yes, Senator Ada?
Yeah, Madam Chair, because Bill 234 and Bill 252 are really pretty much the same bill, except with differences in the verbiage, but they both seek to appropriate funds from the same source and has the same end objective of funding safety-related CIPs. I'm going to go, I'll be withdrawing my bill and we'll just focus then, I suggest we just focus then on the hearing of Bill 252 to remove any confusion.
With that being said, we'll now move forward to Bill 252-33 COR, which is an act to appropriate the sum of $910,000 from fiscal year 2015's hotel occupancy tax unreserved fund balance to the Guam Visitors Bureau for Safety-related Capital Improvement Projects in Tumon. The intent of this bill is to appropriate that sum for safety-related improvements to Guam's pedestrian infrastructure in Tumon with the recommendation to fund the following outline, the following is outlined by GBB's fiscal year 2016 capital improvement project budget, projects budget. budget, projects, budget requests. And the, the projects that we included were the Phase Two Sanvator Streetlight Improvement Project, the Kmart/JFK Crosswalk Safety Improvement, the Sanvator Sidewalk Safety Improvement, and also the multilingual sign replacement. The true findings is to, to, that is real important, is to ensure that the safety of pedestrians and drivers who use these streets by providing GBB with the flexibility to fund the necessary improvements that are vital to our visitor's safety and well-being of the general public in the Tumon area. Here to speak on that, I do have the General Manager Nate Denight here to present support, written and oral testimony. Please join us. Deputy GM Telotide Guey, Senator Tadej Guey, did you'd like to present oral testimony? We do have Mr. Clifford Guzman. And you are Chair of Destination?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair of Destination Management. And Mr. Kim, who's Im, I mean, I'm sorry, Im Jung Soon, also here as part of the Board of Directors.
Howfadi, Madam Chairwoman, howfadi, Senator Ada, howfadi, Senator Esbaldon. I'm here together with my board and my Deputy General Manager. We also have Doris Ada, who's in charge of special projects, which the capital improvement projects work under, also sister to Senator Ada. And I also went to school with Senator Ada's daughters, if that's any help.
Okay.
Yeah. But, yeah, thank you very much for allowing us to speak and for working on this, this bill for us. I will go ahead. My name is John Nathan Pangalini Denight and I'm the GM of the Guam Visitors Bureau and I'll read our testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony for Bill, I'll change this just to Bill 252-33. GBB has received numerous complaints from senators, businesses and the community regarding the state of Tumon's streetlights. Currently, only 50% of the streetlights are functioning, which is a major public safety issue. Tumon has not seen real capital improvement, capital investment improvements in 20 years and the natural wear and tear has taken its toll. While replacing and maintaining streetlights are not GBB's primary area of responsibility, we are making it a top priority for the safety of our island's residents and visitors alike. GBB already completed Phase One of the Sanvator Streetlight Improvement Project in April 2015, replacing 129 lighting fixtures with LED lights and 47 base plates. However, a large number of the streetlights went out after the start of the rainy season last year, which prompted GBB to find out the cause of the problem. Results from a comprehensive assessment done by our engineering team of the streetlight system in Tumon revealed the broken and rusty fixtures, old wiring and damaged electrical boxes that needed serious repair work. As you well know, the budget for the GBB capital improvement projects was not funded for FY 2016. Although $900,000 was encumbered in FY 2015 for the streetlights, it is not enough. The engineering estimates for parts and labor is around $2 million. The cost of the supplies went out for bid and the bid came in at 1.15 million and then now the labor is estimated to be another $1 million. So this funding will improve poorly lit, high-traffic areas such as the Kmart/JFK Crosswalk in Upper Tumon. This crosswalk is not clearly defined, which calls for a need to re-stripe and refresh signage in the area in multiple languages as well. Having adequate lighting is a necessity. Guam already received negative attention three years ago with tourists being hurt and killed. We don't need another incident that compromises the safety of our visitors and local residents and adversely affects Guam's number one industry. We have thousands of people a day that walk and jog along the sidewalks of Tumon in the dark. We also have newly installed security cameras in Tumon that cannot be as effective to deter crime and monitor our streets if the streetlights are not functioning. We need the funding to finish fixing the streetlight system and we need it desperately now. So we ask for the kind support of all the senators to fund these capital improvements and destination enhancement projects and ultimately support the safety and security of all island residents and visitors. Sido smasi for allowing me to provide this testimony in support of this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Clifford Guzman?
Manas Sidoos, manas, good morning. My name is Clifford Guzman and I am a legislative appointee to the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. I'm also Vice Chair of the Destination Management Committee for the GBB as well as, I'm also here in my capacity as a private citizen. So I'm kind of wrapping all of it into one, if you will. I'd like to start off with thanking both authors of both bills for recognizing the, the importance of improving the safety and providing some much-needed improvements to something that hasn't been really, really focused on for 20 years. It has been, let me, let me rephrase that. It hasn't, well, lighting itself has not been really reworked in 20 years. And there have been, some improvements have been down there, but a little more comprehensive look at it needs to be done. I also wanna just start out by thanking also for, you know, the, the idea that, that we're looking at all potential sources of funds to help with much-needed capital improvements down in, in Tumon is, speaks well to your recognition, although we, they were not included in last year's budget, just the fact that you're bringing them through supplemental funding, thank you so much for that. Senator Esbaldon, I know you've been very supportive of anything that has to do with our tourism industry and we thank you also. But I think it's important to also note that the overall cost we're estimating is about 2.2 million to get these streetlights done once and for all. So we have a running start in maintaining them the way they should be maintained. And, you know, the estimates that came in originally that were put together, we're looking roughly about a million, a million, 1.1 million just for the light fixtures themselves, the materials and supplies that are needed to make this happen. And then we're possibly looking at up to another 1.1 million just to get them installed. And so GBB's been thinking outside the box, taking a look at different ways that we can, we can make this more cost-effective, you know, by procuring the much-needed materials ourselves and then, of course, vendor-ing out the installation of all of that. And so those numbers may change as time goes on. So we appreciate the fact that, that any funding that goes towards that is gonna be very, very helpful. And so it is important to note that I think we may need to look at, revisit some of the numbers and we'd like, like the opportunity to do that with you, to see how we could do this. Our Destination Management Committee, we're taking a look at prioritizing how these capital improvements should be done. Of course, we've got a wonderful opportunity this coming May, we're gonna have all these wonderful countries coming out. We're also gonna have the Pacific Asia Travel Association Conference here. And that's huge for Guam as well because they're, they're out there supporting us in, in many, many ways and making sure that our destination's in everybody's list and all of our visitors and our source markets. And so we need to put our best foot forward. Now, with the time that we've got, less than 100 days, we're not gonna get everything done. And so the priority has to be on safety first and we're not even gonna get all the streetlights done, but we need to get things rolling. And so it's important for us to move this forward. And in, in the bills, in 252, you mentioned a list of other improvements that need to happen, crosswalk safety improvements, you know, the, at Poli-Sanvatoris Road, there's also the improvements we're looking at for the sidewalk safety and lighting from the Sheraton because that's also, you know, the destination for our tourists. That's where they, they, they come to visit and where they stay and that's becoming a problem as well. And certainly the residents are complaining, not because the tourists are walking in front of them, but they're concerned with the safety of the tourists. And I think that's admirable and I think that shows that our residents are aware of the importance of tourism in Guam. And so what we're looking for, hopefully, as we move forward along this line, is to work again with the senators, with our legislature, to do what we can to see how you can help us prioritize moving forward. Again, as Nate pointed out, it's been 20 years since any major improvements have been done down there. We need to start thinking about what are we gonna do in the next 20 years? Yesterday in our board meeting, we talked about taking another look at the 2020 vision, seeing where we've been, what we've accomplished and where we are today. A big part of that has to be destination management and that's what we're taking on in our committee, is taking a look at how we can do the Tumon Business Improvement District concept. And that encompasses a lot of things that are down the road, but we need to start addressing that immediately. I know GBB, in the year that I've been there, the stuff that GBB's been doing with what resources they do have at their disposal, has been admirable. And as a matter of fact, we were talking about the bus stops yesterday, something that's been on books and been working on over the last two and a half years. We're starting to see some movement on that and looking at different ways that we can fund that internally. You know, yes, there's some safety related to that because there's a visibility issue and someplace where the buses can stop and know that's where they stop. But other things, as you mentioned in your bill, Madam Chair, the repair of the, the crosswalk safety improvements, that's huge. We're working with the FHWA and DPW to do the assessment to make sure that whatever changes we do, do make sense and to get their traffic engineers and expertise through Parsons Brinkenhoff to come out and do the assessments with us because that's what they do, they know what they're doing. And so that's, that's, that's promising on that side. And then, of course, all the crosswalk signs and the replacement of the handrails and the installation of bollards, all of this is hugely important. And we certainly don't want another incident that happened a couple of years ago. But, you know, more importantly, as you can see, if, you know, with the Coke North and the other exercises the military are doing out here, and there's gonna be more as this military buildup continues, the impact to Tumon is gonna be huge. It's kind of difficult for the military to decide when they can, you know, how they can reschedule these kinds of exercises around our peak tourism times. And that's difficult to do. So we're gonna have more and more impact on that and as more and more hotel rooms are built, as you know, next week, the Niko's gonna do the groundbreaking on their new hotel, do the Tani opening and there's some, there's some others along the way. There's gonna be more and more congestion, not only with cars and buses, but most specifically with pedestrians. And so really, really important and again, wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart and as a resident and certainly from the GBB side for, for giving us the love, if you will, on, on these items. You know, the two bills are, are great and they're good starts. I would almost like to suggest that, that, that we look at figuring out how to meld this, this language together to give, give that flexibility. I think our Destination Management Committee's been working hard. We have a lot of the estimates already of what's needed that we can certainly provide you with for the immediate future and for those safety-related projects. And safety is not just pedestrians, it's not just crosswalks, it's also the trees. We've already had an incident, of course, we had an incident during liberation, but one of the things is tree mitigation, being able to have, working with Parks and Rec to go out and take a look at which trees are, are becoming, you know, dangerous, if you will, the rotting or whatever, and what trees are appropriate and where they should be appropriately. And so, and how do you maintain them? It covers beautification, but more importantly, it covers safety. Because again, we don't want anybody getting hurt by a falling limb or, again, having to clean up and put more money into getting our, our tourism district up and running after a typhoon or whatever. So a lot of things on the plate. And, you know, we're also looking, because of the, the shift towards family, interest in family, family travel from Japan, which we're trying, trying to nurture now, we're looking at areas in the Ritz-Away where we can pull back and open up areas for, you know, kids to play and things like that. Cause there are some, a couple, maybe four or five areas that we found in our easement research where we might be able to do that. So a lot of things on the plate, primarily safety, primarily, number one is gonna be the streetlights. And as you know, GBB's worked really hard with the Guam Police Department, you know, doing all the, the visitor's safety committee's been working hard with Mr. Im to try to upgrade all of that. We're doing our part, helping the mayors out with all of the public, public restrooms in the park, taking on streetlights, which again, isn't necessarily under our jurisdiction, but it's something that's necessary. So we'll continue to do our part to support public health, safety and all the other stuff. But we need to focus right now on the safety of tourism and our visitors and our residents down in Tumon. And Dr. Sidoos Masi, thank you for allowing me to ramble up here.
Yeah, I know.
But, you know, I think I, I thought it'd be a good opportunity to bring up some of these areas. Thanks.
You're very welcome, Mr. Clifford. And just on that thought, yes, the total submitted by GBB's management team and working closely with the Board of Directors was at 2.265. And realizing the costs of what was needed, we felt that we'll work on these projects first and then if there's additional resources that we can. And again, that was committed based on what we had to do to get by for the 2016 fiscal year budget and then realizing what was important and critical for the safety of, of our visitors and our, our residents, that we work on these important projects first, put that at the priority of the listing. And, and we truly appreciate the working relationship that the committee has been able to provide, especially with the information, because it really helped our committee, the oversight on tourism here, push through with the needed amount to date. So thank you. Mr. Im?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Senator Esbaldon and Senator Ada. As Mr. Guzman say about how much important about our project, I think we should do it. He just say like what I'm talk here six years ago, because I was the Chairman of the Destination and I were working with Doris. And that time I let my employees sit down next to my chair and we driving together, hey, check those light, check those light, how many percent? Forty-two percent, forty-three percent. Every two weeks, when I go to the board meeting at the GBB, I always counting the Tumon streetlight because even I have the amusement park in Tumon, but in daytime, I cannot find all the tourists. But in nighttime, there is some, but many people, they talking about, we are scared to going out. The scare mainly is we're losing money. They don't come out and they don't do any, you know, shopping and enjoy their, like, entertaining. So I just came here, but the clips say everything. But on my side, as the visitor's safety and satisfaction committee, I'm working at the GBB now. You know, the, the safety is just like, I like to compare with like technique and improve for the future. Like yesterday, one of the best, the Japan Electronic Company, the name is SHAP, they just closed down and turn over their company to the Taiwan. And Japanese is getting very sad because their name and their face. The reason why they closed down is they never trying to improve and they never trying to develop. So on their electronic side is technical improve and the innovation is very important, but on their service side, safety is very important too. So we have a lot of things. So we have a lot of things for the satisfaction and safety on Guam. For example, the traffic light and then a street light. And as you know, we don't have any traffic directions sign on the street. And we don't have any rail fans on the street. So we're going to step by and step by to trying to make it improve. I think that's our duty and our responsibility for our tourism industry. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ada. Mr. Tiedegui, Senator?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to you, both Senator Ada and Senator Espaldon. And as you said, Senator Espaldon, at GBB is where my niche is at, and I'm very passionate about this. So I'm going to make it short. I noticed that through surveys, through tourists that come to Guam, we're competing with many destinations that have the same thing, are beautiful beaches, shopping, et cetera. But one thing I have noticed is that these tourists, basically, they look at safety first. If this destination is safe to go to, especially when they're bringing families, and we're seeing a lot of families now come to Guam. So that's one of their first priorities. So it's very important, and I'm here for the record to show full support for both bills. And thank you, Senator Ada, for recognizing this issue, and Senator Barnes for pushing this forward through as well. Thank you so much.
Luis Suozmasi, Senator Tiedegui. Senator Ada, please.
Well, I just want to note that, and of course, Mr. Guzman, you've indicated, and, you know, in your own words, you said there's lots of things on the plate that's related to the safety improvements down in Two Mon. And it's also, and I don't think that that's unique to anywhere else, there's always more projects that you can think of, and there's money available. And that's certainly true here also. You know, just the lighting itself needs $2 million, and so far, there's only been identified $900,000. And so, but you also indicated that you recognize that and that you're going to really need to prioritize the CIPs. Now, when the hot bond was issued for the various projects that we're doing now, that law is very specific where it says, we're going to go out and we're going to borrow so much money, and here's where dollar one is going to go to. Here's where dollar two is going to go to. And until you finish, you know, project number two, you don't go to project number three or whatever, okay? But we're not going to just pick and choose. So it's going to be incumbent, I think, upon GBB to, and I would ask that GBB provide to the committee, its prioritization of, if you only got $900,000, are you going to spend all of that on streetlights? Or are you going to allocate maybe 30% of that to streetlights and, you know, the other 40% for crosswalks or whatever? So I would ask that that information be provided to the committee. And if GBB doesn't, I will assure you that I will make the prioritization myself on the floor. You don't want that. Okay? So I ask that you prioritize that. As to where you really think, I mean, it's, we talk a lot about streetlights, and we can put up many streetlights as we can to make it look like daytime at night down in Two Mon, but we can't forget about other things. I tell you, when I go down to Two Mon, I just, I don't even go up the JFK Hill. I go find someplace else, because I'm afraid I'm going to run over somebody up at that intersection. And so, you know, it would just seem that if we're going to improve, similarly, if we're going to improve pedestrian crosswalks, I don't believe that they're all of the same hazard rating. So I think that the crosswalk, certainly up at the JFK intersection, is certainly a lot more hazardous than, let's say, the one, I don't know, maybe across Jamaican Grill at PIC, okay? So, and so, you know, you really need, I really think, a lot of thought needs to be given at prioritizing really where are the hazardous areas. Now, I've also spoken with others who, their idea of improving safety at the crosswalk was, we'll restripe the crosswalk. And maybe that may work down at, for example, across from PIC. It seems pretty well lit and whatnot. But again, going back up to JFK, I think it's going to need a lot more than just, you know, striping of the crosswalk. And it's interesting how, when you get on the internet and just research about pedestrian crosswalk safety technology, you know, they're a little bit more expensive than just, you know, restriping the crosswalk. But I tell you, that is one area that I hope, that I hope we'll get the necessary amount of funding to improve the safety on. The other thing that I want to point out is that I know that DPW and GPA has pretty much kind of stepped out of the picture. And I think, you know, GBB has kind of let them off the hook. And I think that that shouldn't be the case. I think GPA, I guess, said, hey, we're not going to, if I understand it correctly, we're not going to maintain those poles with those lights, because those are not our poles and those are not our lights. And that's fine. I guess we can, you know, GBB can continue to be responsible for that segment of Two Mon that GBB wants to put up the pretty, the decorative streetlights. But there may be areas that, you know, really GPA should be the one putting the streetlights on. And I really think that they should not be let off the hook. In the same way with made mention here about, you know, the signs and whatnot along the I know what's going through GBB's minds. If you want to do it quick, do it yourself. But again, you know, there's no reason why we can't bring DPW in, especially view the fact that in a couple of months here, we're almost going to be facing an extraordinary situation where we're going to have an influx of people. And I don't think our hospital has capacity to, you know, be seeing all those people, the ER. So I really don't think that they should be let off the hook, no. I, GPA, DPW, those come under the oversight of my committee, and I certainly would be more than happy to sit down and facilitate a meeting with them, but I don't think they should be let off the hook. Mr. Guzman, you mentioned about, you know, the last time we really made any kind of significant improvements or investments down in Two Mon, it's about maybe 20 years ago. And we really need to, this is probably the one next infusion, and then we need to start taking a look down the road. How current is your, is the Two Mon master plan? Or do we have one?
Actually, the Two Mon master plan has not been updated in quite a while. Of course, you know, there's different perspectives on the zoning issues, and that's part of our Two Mon Business District Improvement Plan, was to take another look at that to see what needed to be updated, upgraded, whatever. And so, yeah, it's a point well taken that it really doesn't need to be looked at again. There's issues in right of way going down San Vitoria Road, there's issues in, you know, there's some areas where if we had some funding, we could go and purchase some more right of way than we have already and improve things. But it's tight down there, it's a tight corridor. It's a very tight corridor, because of, of course, every business has, over the years, has wanted to build right up to the streets. And then you've got a lot of issues where you've got embankments and things like that. And, you know, if you wanted to make major improvements, you'd have to do some retaining walls and such. But on the zoning side and on the master planning side, we looked at that as part of our Two Mon District Improvement Program. That's going to require some funding. You know, there's only so much the committees can do, and at some point, you have to look at some professional support, but you want to do it wisely. So we try to do as much as we can internally, and certainly with our committee. And then we'll be in a position to make better choices about who would be the most appropriate to take this project on, if and when we have the funding. But yes, all of that needs to be looked at. We've talked ad nauseam with many people and among ourselves about the signage laws. We've got new signs coming up now with advertising adult entertainment and things like that. Enforcement, we've met with the AG's office. This is all part of improving, and particularly in light of the family, the idea of marketing to families. And so a lot of stuff needs to be done down there, trying to get people to encourage people, incentives, disincentives, to improve their building and their landscaping, because there's only so much government can do. But taking down abandoned buildings, I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on. But if we keep doing it piecemeal, that's not going to work either. So that's kind of why that Two Mon District Improvement Plan's important. And that's something that, once we get through some of these safety issues, I mean, we really need to think seriously about how we're going to get that rolling.
Thank you. I have just a couple more questions. And one is, you mentioned about, you know, the, really the need for that sidewalk from Sheraton. Has the right-of-way issue been looked at that as?
Yes, there are some issues with right-of-way, there's no doubt. And that would be restrictive as to the width of the sidewalk. And there's got to be some coordination, of course, of DPW and the Municipal Planning Council and whatnot. But I think right now, the sidewalk as a separate issue, the issue is lighting that at least, getting some lights down there as a start, because of the safety issue. It is dark down there, as we all know, we've driven down there, and there are no, there's virtually no streetlights down there of any significance. So I think the residents would appreciate that for their own safety, but most importantly, for the safety of our visitors.
Has there been any dialogue with GPA as to?
Yes, Senator, you know, for the, actually specifically for the Sheraton, Doris and myself, we worked with GPA, also the mayor's office. So we did get, there was like at one time, no, all the lights weren't working because the boxes were fried. So we did help them and we got that fixed. So there are some streetlights there. I guess the ultimate goal is to have some sort of sidewalk, because there's no sidewalk right now. You mentioned priorities. Yeah, so as we mentioned, this, to fix this San Vitoria Streetlight System, including the JFK Hill, the estimate came in at 2.2 million. So we have about $900,000 from our CIP budget from last fiscal year that we're encumbering just to go 100% for streetlights. So when you say priorities, number one priority is the streetlights. Out of the CIP budget from last year, we spent about $400,000 to fix the sidewalk. And this wasn't made, these were things like holes in the sidewalk, utility boxes that were uncovered, that we'd get tourists falling in the hole, runners breaking ankles. We had the, a lot of complaints in the crosswalks. You see that there are bricks, so there are actual bricks that would break or shatter. So there were holes in the crosswalks. So we got complaints from motorcyclists that crashed in the hole. So we fixed that, and then we striped all the crosswalks in Two Mon. So I think we did, with the CIP that we had previously in the last fiscal year, we pretty much took care of the major thing on the sidewalks, the holes. You know, these are, these are just basic safety issues. When there's a hole, someone could just be seriously injured. So we did that. And then our next goal was the streetlights, so we took the time to do the complete streetlight assessment. So that came in. So as far as priority, I would say all of the New Moon Project will be the streetlights as the priority, and all the funding will go in there, including the JFK, because I 100% agree with you that the JFK crosswalk needs more lighting. I think we had a conversation with DPW, and we are going to, we are constantly working with them. They are in our Destination Management Committee. So we're working with them to see how we can light up the JFK crosswalk. Their, the decorative poles kind of stop before you hit JFK, and then we have those big poles, the major power pole. So we have to custom fabricate brackets to work on those poles to fit the streetlights, because they're the real, the real big ones. So we're working with DPW on that. So we'll continue to work with them, and any assistance you can help us in working with them to get some of these projects done. But like you said, you know, for example, island-wide road maintenance is a project that Doris worked on with DPW. They used to pay half of the island-wide road maintenance for cutting the grass and so forth, and we paid the other half. At one point, you know, maybe 10 years ago, they stopped paying their half to the contractor, and the contractor wouldn't do the work. So, I mean, these are the realities of, I guess, you know, their mandates and so forth. So we'll always want to work with them and work together with them. We do realize their challenges to cover the whole island. And certainly, certainly these projects, like the streetlights in Two Mon, you know, if they can't get it done, we're happy to do what we can in collaboration with them. And if they can't do it, we'll always do it. But, you know, this is something that needs to get done. As you mentioned, in May, we're going to have Festpac, we're going to have PATA, and people are going to walk down Two Mon and be scared to, as Mr. M. said, to go out at night, or if we have a, you know, someone coming for these events, we invited them here and something happened to them while they're here. But more importantly, actually, I have a letter here from Ben Ferguson, the GM of PIC. If you don't mind, maybe I could read it real quick. And this is just one of many letters that I'm receiving from many people in the community. So this is from Ben Ferguson, the GM of the Pacific Islands Club. Half a day, Mr. Denite, I'm writing to you to express our ongoing concern about the safety of our pedestrians and evening joggers crossing across the road to PIC's parking garage entrance. The streetlights in this area have been out of order for a lengthy period of time. This presents a dangerous situation at PIC with motorists exiting our parking structure area. We have heard from guests and employees that they have encountered numerous near-miss accidents with pedestrians, particularly joggers and runners. In all instances, it was because visibility was very poor due to improper lighting. We are fortunate that we have not encountered an accident, but it will only be a matter of time if we are not proactive in solving this current problem. We humbly ask your help in resolving this important issue. And I bring this up because, you know, many times people say it's, this is for the tourists, but, you know, working at GBB and living in Two Mon right next to PIC, there's thousands of people that come down at night to jog, especially Mondays. You know, Monday, everyone wants to start the week right. So there'll be, you know, thousands of joggers, of local residents. And then, you know, we have thousands of workers working in the tourism industry. So, you know, I think it's, we got to do it for ourselves first, for our local residents, and then that'll only benefit the visitors as well as they walk, so they walk or travel or jog or enjoy the beach. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Luis Suozmasi, Senator Espaldon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming and bringing this slide. I've always been one to kind of support the idea that we need to constantly make sure that our product is right. We do a lot of marketing. I know, in fact, the May, I think the major portion of GBB funding goes towards marketing. And sometimes I think we don't perhaps partition enough for the maintenance and the product development. I think Mr. M. made a very good point about what happened to one of the Japanese companies by just neglecting a constant improvement in innovation. And as a result, they've had to basically sell themselves out. And so I guess the question right now, for me, in my mind, and I appreciate the exchange that Senator Ada went through for you, because I agree with him on many of those issues. But the question then becomes, with GBB's budget, are you looking to, I mean, we make great strides on the marketing side. Are we looking to perhaps readjust the budget a little bit to make sure that our product is exactly, if not better, than what we're marketing?
That's a great point, Senator. Product improvement is always important as well, but I can't, you can't say one is more important than the other, because we need the tourists to have the budget to market the product. So, but we, I think we have, in the past couple of years, been putting more and more emphasis on product development. Well, our CIP wasn't passed this year, but previous year, we had the CIP budget, we have our maintenance budget. So, for example, if the tourist attraction fund is 39 million, right off the top, you have $7 million going to the hot bond. So the hot bond is 100% product improvement, right? Building the museum, the new legislature building, Plaza de España. Then I think this year, 7 million was direct appropriations going to executive branch agencies, like DPR was 100% funded from the tourist attraction fund this past year. And then internally within GBB.
Do you agree with that, by the way? Do you agree with that? That DPR is 100% funded by the tourist attraction fund?
That DPR is 100% funded by the Tourist Attraction Fund?
Do I agree with funding DPR out of the Tourist Attraction Fund?
100%.
I don't think so. I think, you know, I think there's, it's parks and recreation. I mean, there's a, there's a part of it that, yes, relates to tourism. There's a part that doesn't. So, should it be 100% funded out of the Tourist Attraction Fund? I think, I think not. I think, I think it's important to make sure that we do, you know, focus the Tourist Attraction Fund as it was built to do the mission that it was built for, is to attract tourists. The fund itself attracts the tourists and then the benefits from, the economic benefits from the tourists coming here, you know, the employment from the jobs created from the hotels and all the other industries, the taxes that are paid by that employment, you know, are the benefits of the attraction fund. But, you know, if you don't use the attraction fund to attract the tourists, you won't have those other subsequent benefits. But, you know, GBB has been very supportive in supporting the community and doing all we can, as evidenced by trying to fix lights and other projects. And we'll continue to work hard to get it done. But, you know, they're also, as Senator Adams said, you know, we are trying to also work with the agencies that are in charge of the, you know, of those areas to work together and see how we can support them so that they can just complete their mission.
So, getting back to the original question, I'm sorry I sidetracked you on that secondary question. But getting back to the original question of, are there any attempts or any, are there any attempts to perhaps readjust the apportionment of your budget to reflect perhaps an increase in maintenance and product improvement?
Oh, so definitely, I'm sorry if I didn't answer. So, maybe four years ago, when I came in, we were at $3 million under Destination Development, which is our product improvement. So, that's grown to about $7 million. So, it's more than doubled in the portion of our budget. So, we're definitely putting a lot of focus on that area. Yeah, as you said, product development is of the utmost importance. And you need the product to back up the marketing. And I think you can see the evidence of that work in the room rates. So, you can see, you know, while our tourist numbers are increasing, you know, we've gone from, you know, 1.3 and this year we hit 1.4. But our Tourist Attraction Fund in the last four years has pretty much almost doubled. And why that's doubled is because of our hotel room rates. And the hotel room rates, when I started, maybe it was about $110 average rate. And we're now at $160. So, a 50%, $50 increase in the hotel room rate. And that's reflective in the quality of the destination, that people are willing to pay more for our rooms because our destination is of a higher quality. So, yeah, in our Tourism 2020 Plan, our number one objective is to increase, I mean, is to improve the product and improve the quality of our destination. And that's, you know, that's not just GBB, that's all the government agencies working together. But that's also the private sector, Mr. M. adding Wi-Fi in his taxis and making sure they're clean and giving good service, the hotels, renovating the hotel, building, building new hotels because we always need new product, new exciting things. So, we have the Dusitani that was built. So, you know, it takes everyone working together. So, yeah, I think we have made that shift from, you know, being a close, cheap destination. And then we're doing that through marketing, but also through our product development, into coming more of a world-class, first-tier destination of choice. And you can see that in our, in our room rate, where people, you know, I think when we launched our Tourism 2020 Plan, that was January 2014, and we set the hotel room rate in our plan for 2020 at $225. And I can remember talking to some of the hoteliers and they were just like, looking at me like they're crazy, right? And look, right, 100, you know, just two years later, we're at 160, you know, halfway to our goal. So, I think, I think definitely we're on the same page as far as improving the quality of the destination. But at the same time, you, there's a lot of competition out there. For example, in Japan alone, Taiwan is spending $25 million just in media ad buys, you know? And so, we do have to be very targeted with our marketing budget, and I think we are. But when you compare our marketing budget to other destinations, you know, it is kind of, you know, while it seems, maybe seems large for Guam standards, but in the international realm, it's not very, not very large. But I think our team works really hard to maximize what we do with that marketing budget. And it is important to make a noise and be targeted and, you know, keep Guam top of mind when there's so many other destinations to choose from nowadays.
Okay. I have a few other questions, but I'll go with them for now. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Espaldón. I'd like to thank the panel for being here this morning. Like, again, I do want to state for the record in the efforts to supporting GBB and the mission mandates moving over, I do share a lot of the same sentiments with the good Senator from Mingala, Senator Adams, who did talk about the responsibilities and not letting the other agencies that you work closely with, GPW, you know, parks, bricks and all that. There are mission mandates, but as one team Guam, one government of Guam that's supposed to provide for those basic services and making sure that the product that we're extending to showcase our island to the, to the rest of the world is very important, that there's a balance. And that was the reason why GBB stepped up to the plate to take on and tackle some of these projects, these CIP programs that really should be housed somewhere else. So, the major thing, working closely with GBB as Oversight Chair, was making sure that the operations and the needs of what GBB needed moving forward was working there. And that the intent, when the committee found out that the CIP request that was submitted a fourth fiscal year, 2016, was here, that the commitment from this committee to make sure that these CIP projects are being addressed, that's why we're on this table today. So, I appreciate your time. This committee will continue to work closely with GBB to make sure that we address that. But more importantly is to also make sure that we work with the government stakeholders to follow through on their responsibility to help make this happen.
Just one last thing, Madam Chair. I did ask the, about the prioritize list, knowing that you've only got $900,000. So, you can't do the sidewalk safety, you can't do crosswalk safety, and do the streetlights also with that amount of money. But, and you can't, you know, so you got to pick which is the most hazardous crosswalk. So, at any rate, please provide that to the committee and maybe, well, I guess the chair can give a deadline and follow up on that.
Mr. M.?
Yes. As you know, I've been here for 31 years from Korea, and my major is tourism management. With my experience with 31 years for my life on Guam with tourism, I got some one wisdom, what we can do to make satisfaction for the customer or tourist. Finally, I got answered by myself is, we need to find out what the customer needed. So, what I feel it here for the streetlight is, we came here for requests for the hot bond, but actually, what I'm thinking is, tourists, they're the one need the traffic light on the Tumon. Because they want to go out and they want to go out and enjoy, and they want to make us some memory. That's the one, what I believe is, we can make 100% customer satisfaction. Side of that, the GBB, what I'm thinking to need to do, we need to do work more than what they expecting. So, if we're making bright on the streetlight on Tumon, maybe GBB need to do another like a family event in the nighttime together enjoyable on Guam. So, I think we need to follow up to the, like, customer need. And we can provide the attraction of the Guam. That's the very necessary on the tourism industry on Guam. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. With that, if there are no others wishing to present oral testimony, we would call the three items on the agenda dated February 26, 2016, Friday publicly heard. And I'd like to thank all of you guys who were, who are here today to have given that oral testimony. So, again, un dunkle in the Sitzuas Masi. Have a wonderful weekend. God bless.